Back in session. Back to the issue at hand, how do we want to, does the board want to re-advertise and how do we want to re-advertise?
Mr. Chairman.
Pleasure, Board, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we re-advertise RFQs for the TDC Administrator, and we ask the TDC to return us a top five, not one, two, three, four, five, but a top five, so we can decide who that Administrator will be.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, do we have a second?
That's to do the top five?
Yes, sir.
Which means you have to change the RFQ to reflect the Board's intention here?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, it'll take like five minutes.
Okay. So we do have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Massie, any discussion?
Yes, um, now, before we all get past what happened then.
It'd be less whatever they have then.
What we do, we did is make an emotion just about like we made last time. What can we do for this to be the last thing?
He's going to amend the RFQ, correct?
Commissioner Lockley, I can amend this, I hear what you're saying, which was, in the first round of advertising, you said you wanted three and you only got two, so maybe, if I can get some clarification from Commissioner Jones, I think I heard it already, which is, the TDC, we're going to re-advertise, the TDC is to review and return to the County Commission up to the top five, if they have less than five, you're going to accept and interview whoever, whoever they return to you up to the top five, so if they get four, they're returning four, if it's three, they're returning three, if it's two, they're returning two.
And make sure you don't put the ranking thing in there, you know, where the County Commission, I mean, where the TDC ranks them.
No, they're not, they're not going to be ranked one, two, they're going to be returned to this County Commission on a co-equal basis, to be interviewed by the County Commission with a determination by the County Commission on who you want to hire, without any preference to whether you're ranked number one, two, three, four, or five.
But make sure, make sure that the TDC is supposed to look at those to make sure, put it somewhere, TDC has to look at those to make applications to make sure they meet the requirements of the RFQ.
Yes, sir.
You'll have to put something in there.
Well, I will work on that, but that's implicit by what their job is in reviewing, but I will try to find some language that reminds them of that.
Just, just a question if I might, so as, as I understand it, other than some clarity that, for Commissioner Sanders' comment, the TDC would rank in accordance to the formula that presumably would stay in the RFQ.
Correct.
But that ranking would only be for the purposes of deciding who is in the top five.
That's correct.
And they would not forward the, the rank, but just the top five.
Just the names, no ranking.
What about the conflict?
Commissioner, I first heard about the potential voting conflict in this meeting, I frankly haven't given it much thought, but I will get with your TDC Chairman and give him some advice on, you know, Chapter 112 is pretty clear on who can vote for what and what, when they have to abstain, so.
You know, we just wanted to bring that issue to your attention, and it wasn't until we knew who the applicants were that we knew that this was going to be an issue, but had a couple of Board members that were in some way related, and 112 I couldn't read indicated anything, but I, I'm not an attorney, so I beg that off, and then, of course, two of the applicants were, have, either are or have been employees of mine, you know, I think we've all known that as we've, as we've gone along, but for the purposes of, you know, full disclosure, I thought we probably needed to make that known in general.
So you'll give them a memo on, on the chapter of conflict of voting and all that, so they got that?
Yes, sir, I will have a conference, well, I'm not sure, if you want me to do a written memorandum, I can.
I think so.
I think you need to.
And send it to the TDC, so that this is not another legal question, we come back again, and now we can't rank them, I mean, there was comments made that the Chairman didn't have authority to do this or that, the only thing the Chairman did was took the motion that was made by this Board last time and said rank the top four.
That's correct.
Or review the top four, that was a motion of this Board, not my personal opinion or anything else, so, I mean, I've heard derogatory comments made about the Chairman getting out in front of the Board, and absolutely not, I don't think I've ever got out in front of this Board, all I did was, in a day-to-day operation, is refer back to what the motion was by the Board, as we see now, the Board as a whole aired when we done that, nothing intentional, we just, we just were trying to be more inclusive, more than, than being more restrictive, if the Board had said, no, just send us back to top two, that would have been restrictive of the RFQ, we, there was only four, we, we thought as a Board, well, we just review all four, that way everybody's included, so we were being more responsive, more than restrictive in, in, in the determination of the Board last time, as we see now, we've aired because it was not the same as RFQ, so we got all that straight, we do have a motion and a second on the floor now.
One more question, I got, well, I got people in my district, and like he said, he brought it up, both of, two of them work for the TDC, but one of them was let go, what kind of, I guess, what am I have to make sure that lady is treated fair?
Make sure that they're what, sir?
To make sure she treated fair in the ranking.
Can I address one thing, sir, before we proceed, the person in question was not let go, and she wanted me to clarify that for the record, which I did at a previous meeting, she, she resigned?
I meant she resigned, well, she wasn't working with him no more, but if that gonna be a conflict, then, that's what I want to make sure, that that don't be a conflict.
Well, Commissioner, I, I'm sorry, you want?
Well, Commissioner Lockley, I can attempt to address that in the memorandum, the Board wants me to send to the TDC and give them some written instructions to disregard, you know, much like a judge does in, in a court setting, the jury is to disregard the, the statements of the witness on the stand, I mean, we can tell them that, but in terms of how to regulate good conduct and ensure, I mean, we rely on people's good faith, y'all got good people on the TDC, and I, I think that, you know, when they're instructed to disregard certain matters, then I, I think they will disregard it and not take it into consideration, and they will, you know, fairly and in a balanced manner evaluate the applications and return the top, up to the top five applicants without any ranking to you.
Yeah, and I'm sorry for using the wrong word in, about let go, I'm sorry about that, I mean, I just, the lady put in a resignation, and I want to be treated just like everybody else.
That's what we try to do, we try to be fair and equitable to everybody across the whole framework, and Mr. Chairman, I know how you feel, I've been Chairman before, and you do get words put in your mouth, that's not like the other day at the TDC meeting, I said, I'm not saying anything.
That's fine, go ahead.
This is for y'all too.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Curts, time's about to run out, and if we re-advertise and all, okay, 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 okay.
So we need to?
We do have a motion and a second on the floor?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries. I think we're pretty clear on where we're going with that issue. Mr. Blair?
I'm, that's my, I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you, Board members.
All right, item number eight, Commissioners, on my report, due to the delay of the awarding, of awarding the selection of the professional executive administrative services for Franklin County TDC contract, I'm recommending extending your current Administrator's contract, Allen Inc., that's not, LLC, I'm sorry, on a month-to-month basis for a maximum of three months, this should allow adequate time for the selection of a new Administrator and a transitional period.
What act, what item of that, Mike?
I'm sorry?
What, what number?
Oh, number eight.
Number eight.
It's in the last page there, Commissioner, item number eight.
So moved.
You missing a page?
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massie, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries?
That's it.
Now, Mike, will you, will you be redoing this RFQ and giving the Board a chance to see that before it's advertised, or how's that going to work, or you're just going to redo it and advertise it, or is the Board going to?
With pleasure, you tell me what you want me to do.
I'd like to have you redo it, bring it back to this Board at the next meeting, so that we all know what is being advertised, and so that when we move forward, we're moving forward, and everybody's in agreement with what's in RFQ and why it's in there, so if there's any more discussion amongst the Board members, that something else needs to be changed, it can be done before we advertise.
Yes, sir.
Could I get a motion of the Board to do that, do you need a motion of the Board or direction to do that, Mike?
I'm pretty good at following directions.
Well, I don't want the, Commissioner, I don't want the Chairman getting out in front of Board members, I'd rather have a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion, go ahead and have the Attorney bring back the, the RFQ for the Administrative Services of TDC before you send it to the next page.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Massie, any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries, is that all for you, Mr. Blair? Thank you for your report this morning.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next will be Ms., Madam Clerk.
I don't have a report this morning, Mr. Chairman.
No report by Madam Clerk this morning, next will be?
Whitney?
I'm sorry, Whitney, you can hear there's no report from Allen.
No report from Mr. Allen, okay. Mr. Morone, you would be next.
I can start, and then we'll get Amy in for the public hearing soon, I'm over, that's supposed to start at 10:30. Let's go back a few pages, let me take a deep breath there, okay, we did item number one already, item number two, there are two upcoming Florida Association of Counties Conferences, the first is the Innovation and Policy Conference, that's on September 26th to 28th in Charlotte County, the other is a Legislative Conference from November 28th to the 30th in Hillsborough County, there will be FAC Board of Directors meetings, consortium meetings, and other events that would require Commissioner's staff and the County Attorney attendance, not everybody goes to both meetings, but we kind of, we're staggered on those meetings, Board action to approve travel and expenses for both conferences.
Pleasure to Board. So moved by Commissioner Lockley. Second by Commissioner Sanders, any further discussion?
Just one, just one, Mr. Chairman, just one clear, point, I will be attending the September 26th through the 28th meeting, that will be my last consortium meeting, and then in the November meeting, when y'all do the reorganization, then you can appoint the person to the Gulf Consortium.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor, all those in favor? All opposed, motion carries?
Item number three, the Franklin County, the Franklin County School Homecoming Parade will be held on Friday, October 26th at 2:00 P.M., parade route is on Highway 98 from Old Ferry Dock Road to Second Street in East Point, the Franklin County Sheriff's Office will work with the schools to assist with the parade route and the detour route, Board action to approve the closing of Highway 98 and the adjoining streets for the parade.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massie, second by Commissioner Sanders, any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries?
Continuing, Ms. Lori Swizer, your ship Administrator has submitted the ship annual reports and certification for your review and approval, the annual report covers three fiscal years, the closeout year, which is 2015 to 2016, that requires all that year's funds to be spent, interim year one, 2016 to 2017, that requires all that year's funds to be encumbered by June 30th, 2018, and interim year two, 2017 to 18, which allows that year's funds to be reported as unspent or unencumbered, in addition, Commissioner Jones requested that Ms. Swizer's added to the agenda once a quarter to update the Board on the ship program activities, and also as a reminder, Ms. Swizer is seeking replacement of Board members for the county's Housing Authority Board, Board action to approve the annual reports, which are attached, and authorize the Chairman's signature on the certification.
Pleasure to Board.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Sanders, any further discussion?
Yeah, if we got any, please, we can put her in the county.
Oh, good question, oh, I'm sorry, want to finish the motion and then which, which I?
Go ahead.
Okay, yes, I am actually working with Lori, we meet on Thursday, I want to see if I can get her in the Armory somewhere, one of the office spaces, maybe Van's old office or not, we're, we're looking at that, Commissioner.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I think she's working for us, she need to be in the county building.
Is she out there at the old high school?
Yeah, and you know that transitioning out there, Commissioner?
Well, she needs, she needs to be back there around the Armory.
Yes, ma'am.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor, all those in favor? All opposed, motion carries?
Before we continue?
You want to hold off, or what?
I'm trying to go to a public hearing schedule, can I?
I've got one minute together.
Okay, item five has three parts, Board action to approve the following change orders, A, Board action to approve change order number three for the Fort Coombs Armory and Convention Center renovation project, this is a deductive change order, reduces the construction contract with EMO by $2,000 in contingency, contingency funding that was not used, this is just a technical change order, it doesn't cost the county any money, however, it is necessary to provide the appropriate paperwork for the state so that the grant could be closed and the county can get its $180,000 back for the funds that were already expended, so believe it or not, we are reducing.
We're sending money back to the state.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, we are, it's less.
Go ahead, we'll be.
B.
Are you going to do it all or?
Yeah.
Or, your call.
How many have you got?
Three.
Three, are they all related to the Armory?
No, sir, three different change orders.
I'll make a motion.
Sir.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries?
Five, B, at your August 21st meeting, the Board approved change order number five to allow Robertson Roberts to pave the north, south, and east sides around the old jail to provide additional parking and better traffic flow, especially on busy court days, while working the project, it was discovered that the west side of the building, which was originally paved at least 30 years ago, is suffering from sink spots and other issues, Robertson Roberts confirmed that they would repair the sink spots and add a one-inch overlay of asphalt on the west side of the old jail for $8,000, Board action to approve that expenditure from the, from the paving fund.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Lockley, any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries?
And C, Board action to approve change order number two from the Bay Shore Drive Sidewalk Improvement Project, this also is a deductive change order that reduces the overall cost of the project by $130.50, which reduces the total amount of the project to $385,149.20.
Pleasure to Board. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Lockley, any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries, okay, Mike?
And I'll pause, then we can pick up at seven.
We're now be conducting a public hearing, rezoning request, Miss Amy.
Okay, this morning we have a rezoning request for St. George Island, an ordinance rezoning lot 20, block two, west, unit one, St. George Island, Gulf Beaches, Franklin County, Florida, from C2, commercial business to C4, commercial mixed use, this lot was approved in May for a public hearing, and with the fires, it got delayed, and today we're looking at rezoning this one lot, I do have a map, unfortunately, it's not coming up, it, it will be surrounded by C4, the lot to the west of this is still remaining C2.
It is surrounded by C4?
Yes, ma'am, it has a lot, there's only going to be one lot in this row that will remain to be C2, they are aware of this new St. George Island Overlay District, they were provided that ordinance at the meeting.
Pleasure to Board.
We, public comment?
Public comment, I'm sorry, public comment, any public comment on this issue, please raise your hand, be recognized, come forward, state your name for the record. Any public comment on this rezoning request? There being no public comment, pleasure to Board.
Motion, please.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Lockley, any discussion?
Yes, sir, this is the first rezone, I think, that we've done since the overlay district was implemented, so my recommendation would be that we amend this ordinance to provide that it is subject to the overlay ordinance, and you don't have to delay your public hearing, but would like to make that recommendation and ask that Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Lockley amend their motion second to so reflect.
To so reflect, tell me again, I'm sorry.
So that the ordinance, you are adopting an ordinance to rezone from C2 to C4, and I simply want to have a whereas provision incorporated into the ordinance that states that this rezoning is subject to your overlay district, just, just for point of clarity, this is the first rezone since the overlay, and I think I'd like to see us make sure that, that there's no question about their requirement to comply with their overlay district, it's, it's, it's a belt and suspenders approach, Commissioner Jones, but it's just my recommendation.
I'll amend my motion to reflect the Attorney's comments, that it be, that I'm recommending rezoning it subject to the business overlay district, I don't know.
Commissioner Lockley, you amend your second?
I want to ask you, oh, I think that the first one, you, okay, we do this?
Oh, yes, sir, yes, I mean, I just want to make abundantly clear, again, it's a belts and suspenders approach, because if you were to leave that language out, they would still be subject to the overlay, but again, I would like to have it expressly stated in this rezon, since it's the first rezoning in the overlay district since that ordinance was adopted last year, let's add that into this ordinance and all future rezoned ordinances that may occur.
Amendment motion.
We have amendment, the motion and the second by Commissioner Lockley, any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries?
Okay, that's all that I have today, thank you so much.
Next, we'll go back to Mr. Morone, finish up your county coordinator report.
Yes, sir, thank you. Item number seven, Commissioners, to last meeting, the Board approved Pigott's contract for the Gulf Shore Relocation Project, at the pre-construction meeting held on March 27th, Ms. Kristen Ebersol, the Ballpoint State Park Manager, stated that certain special conditions of an easement that allowed the county access over the state park property to access the residences were not met, one of those conditions being H, guarantee shall provide managing agency $14,000 in goods and/or services as additional compensation pursuant to grantor's senior facilities policy dated January 23rd, 1996, within 180 days of execution of this easement by the grantor, this easement was signed by the county on July 2013, was approved by the Department's Environmental Acquisition and Restoration Council on June of 2013, there are a series of emails between Mr. Mark Urinton and Mr. Robert Steele, who was the park manager at that time, about the $14,000 of in-kind service, Mr. Steele was unable to provide any project for the county to do, but in his August 30th, 2013 email, suggested that Franklin County could cut a $14,000 check to the state park in some special account that they had, is the Board willing to consider this option instead of the agreed to $14,000 in goods and/or services, or discussion?
I thought it was in kind services.
Yes, and I?
Well, that's what it was.
Yes, and I had?
And they're asking us to cut a $14,000 check, not doing those services.
Mr. Chairman, if, I mean, Mr. Morone consulted with me about this issue last week, and I said the exact same thing Commissioner Sanders just said, which is, goods and services is not cash, so, I mean, I'm not saying that you could not change the contract that you have now, but you have to go through the process of amending it and sending it up the food chain of DEP and getting them to approve it, I mean, if that's the Board's will, we'll do that, but my recommendation is put the onus on them to provide us with the projects that we can perform to provide the originally agreed-upon consideration, which was goods and services.
I agree with it.
In kind.
I agree with it.
I agree, I agree too.
Yeah, I agree with the Attorney, I think, when you, when you strike a deal, that deal needs to be met all the way down the line, it don't matter who comes in there, who don't, you know, and we did it in kind services, and that's the way it needs to be, and they would come up with some projects that we can do in kind services or goods with.
It states in here that this was all done by the gentleman that's no, no longer there, back in?
2013, sir.
2013, we're now in 2018, and it's no fault of the counties that these, we weren't given the opportunity to provide the services and goods, and even though there's a new person there, this was done back in 13, so I, I'd suggest you go back to whoever the new park ranger or manager is now, and see if there's some things we can do to, to correct him.
I have, I've reached out to her, she actually reached, maybe she was off last week, she reached out to me on the weekend by email, and so we're going to try to set up a call for this week to discuss this further, I just wanted to know before I talk to her, how the Board felt about it.
Well, you need to involve Mr. Curdsen on these calls, because he, he was more involved during that time when you weren't here, in, in this capacity, so he knows kind of what was said and what wasn't said, and he has all the emails, so I would include Mr. Curdsen on, on you.
I need to tell him we going up on him, that they go up on us.
If I may?
Yes.
You said this was from August of 2013, and this is September of 2018?
Yes, sir.
I would have Mr. Morone continue along the path that the Board has suggested, but I think I also should look at a statute of limitations defense, written contracts have a five-year statute of limitations, there's a reason why you have a statute of limitations, so that you do not have obligations, including contractual obligations, hanging on ad infinitum, so they may have lost their opportunity to get any, goods and services exchanged in kind with the county, but I, I will look at that, and it may be that the Board still wants to be cooperative at work with the state park, but the state's subject to the same contractual statute of limitations as the county, and any individual is also subject to that same statute of limitations.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that would direct the Attorney to look at the statute of limitations on this agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection, there may be a limitation there over the five years, so.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Lockley, any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries?
Okay, just item seven, I'll be ready for this, item eight, item nine, at the August 21st regular meeting, the Board made a motion to advertise an RFQ for additional engineering firms, since FDOT requires that we advertise for engineering services such as design and CEI for all of their projects, Ms. Urinton concurred with me that we don't have enough projects to rotate between multiple engineering firms outside of the FDOT projects, as a matter of fact, we mostly use our engineering firms as consultants and problem solvers for some of our issues, somewhat like an engineering department, based on the information presented, would the Board consider allowing an RFQ advertisement for only one engineering firm?
That's fine.
That's fine, I just wanted, didn't want to go against the Board wishes.
That's fine.
Because we just don't have enough work, and I don't want to give somebody the idea to think we have projects.
So we don't have enough, like, lab programs or anything like that to?
Outside of lab, yeah.
Yes, outside of lab, we don't have anything?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make that motion that you go ahead and advertise that for one engineering firm.
All right, that works for me.
That's fine.
Sir.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, motion carries?
Item number 10, Commissioners, inform the Board, the staff has received a draft of the Franklin County Security Exercise After-Action Review Report and Recommendations from Mr. Grant Slaton of the trial court, who is a trial court administrator, this document is a result of the Franklin County Security Exercise that was held on Friday, May 11th, 2018, from noon to 3:15 P.M. at the Franklin County Courthouse, there will be future meetings that will include staff from the Court Administration Office, county constitutional officers, the county administration office to discuss priorities and funding and the security needs of the courthouse, forward any concerns or suggestions you have, so I can present and discuss it at one of these meetings, I'm sorry, I meant to say relating to the document that I sent you, based on Chapter 119.071, Section 3, subsection A of the Florida Statute, there is a potential confidential and exempt information in this report, so it isn't for public distribution in a format I've submitted it to you, public records requests for this document should be sent to the Office of Court Administration, Second Judicial Circuit, care of the trial court martial, Mr. Bill Wills, but if you guys had a chance to look it over, there's a lot in there that they want done, and, uh, funding is an issue, I'm not going to sit here and, and say it's not, to cover some of these things, I mean, especially hardening of the area where the security is now, that's going to cost us a pretty penny, and, and I've heard a lot of discussion, I've talked to both Linda and Erin, the problem is court funds are very restrictive on what they can be used for, and, and, Madam Clerk, you can jump in anytime to say exactly what some of the problems are, but we just can't spend courthouse, courthouse funding in a way we can spend out of our own taxes to do some of these projects, so.
But didn't the Court Administrator said they were going to help offset some of these costs?
Yeah.
That's what I was led to believe.
They did say that, sir, you are correct.
So those negotiations are ongoing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's don't, let's don't get into more.
It's a lot to get in right now, until we have future meetings, I just want, is there any questions you guys have that you want asked on your behalf at one of the upcoming meetings, please send them to me, and I will make sure they?
I agree with most of the suggestion, I will tell you that, but they promised to help fund some of this stuff too, so. But they promised to help fund some of this stuff too, so.
We do think that they will. There's a court, there's a court innovation funds. The chief judge has to approve that. So we'll be working, Michael and I, with finance to try and get as much of that fund.
Okay. Some of what we ain't supposed to be talking about, so I don't want to get into the specifics of the report, because that's not what-
But some of that stuff need to be took care. I mean, knock down the road immediately.
Yeah, I agree. But I agree, we have some mail.
Yeah. Funding help, yes, sir.
All right, Mike, move forward.
Share your concerns with me. Item eleven, Ms. Lesley Cox has been asked by Florida Native Plant Society to submit a resolution for your review and approval, declaring the month of October twenty eighteen as Florida Native Plant Month in Franklin County. This resolution is worded in the same manner as a resolution that was approved by the same, by this board, the county, in twenty fifteen. I attach that to my report. So board action to approve that resolution.
Pleasure to the board. So moved. We have a motion by Commissioner Massey. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Item twelve, board action to schedule a special end of the fiscal year meeting on Friday, September twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen, at nine A.M. The board will approve the final bill list for fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, which reduces the amount of bookkeeping transactions for your finance department.
Pleasure to the board.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. September twenty-eighth, some of us are going to be in Charlotte County.
Whoa.
Twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth.
Right, Commissioner. Okay, I'll have to get with finance, and we come back with another-
Yeah, because I'll be gone.
Matter in which we can do that.
You'll be gone too, won't you, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, most of you will.
Most of it.
Can we do it after, can we do it after the meeting on the eighteenth?
How about let me discuss this with finance and get back to you in a-
I'm saying that's the last day, the last working day of the year, I believe.
That's why you picked that day?
Yeah.
Because they'll be approving bills that day.
Forgot about that meeting that they had. I'll get back with finance and get back with the board on that one.
Okay.
Good, good pick, Commissioner. I'm glad you saw that.
Well, I have three here, won't we?
Yeah. Well, I don't know. I don't know. Like, I can't say that right now. I got to go check, Commissioner.
Commissioner Likely saying no.
Yeah.
So there'll be two of us here.
No, it's my opinion too.
We can't do nothing with two of us.
Because it depends what type of meetings you guys have at that, down in Charlotte County. And I'm, I'm sorry, number thirteen, as a reminder, your first public budget hearing for fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen is scheduled for today at five fifteen P.M.
Today? Today.
Today. Five fifteen P.M. I did not have my report about the USDA meeting, which covers three things. It covers a discussion about weaves, a discussion about the, good news about the building for the road department, and possible good news about the supervisor election, depends on what direction this county goes. I will have more information at the next meeting, because USDA is doing some research for me. We'll get back. But it was some pretty good news. And that's all I have for the board today.
Does the board members have anything for Mr. Morone right now?
Yeah, I need to discuss something with him about the hospital.
Yes, sir.
Um, it's all right. Come to my attention, since we, when we hired this temporary administrator, he, the way we paying him, it causing us more by him being temporarily than it would be if he were permanent. What it is, in his contract, which, by him being temporary, he get paid for mileage and everything else, which, that's why I never did like the contract in the beginning, but he got it. And the way it is, it's causing us more that way than it was if he was hired directly as a permanent administrator. If you check the numbers, I don't know whether y'all got the numbers or not, but you want to talk on that, and then I'll make a motion?
Yes, sir. Can I go ahead without amending the agenda?
If we want to take up this non-agenda item, we would first have to have a motion and a second, and approval of the board to amend the agenda to discuss this item. If that motion should occur, then the board would have to take public comment before you take any action on that matter.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we bring up this matter.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Likely to amend the agenda.
Sir.
Have a second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, commissioners, if we remember, about two, three months ago, time is, comes together, the board had basically made a motion to, a thirty-day notice for Mr. Cooper to be removed, and directed me to find, the best I could do to find, a replacement for Mr. Cooper. I got a recommendation from Mr. H.D. Cannington. That was from Mr. Jim Coleman, that he recommended him. And we talked about the terms, because he was interim, and yes, Commissioner Likely is correct. And I informed the board of such, that basically, it's not just the salary, because he's interim, and Mr. Coleman verified this for me, and I did some of my own checking, and it's true. As an interim basis, you do pay more expenses for CEO than you would if they were a permanent one with a contract. We all remember how the contract with Mr. Cooper went, and how much problems we had with that. So, Mr. Cannington's been here. Now, it was my understanding that the board wanted to keep that status until Mr. Coleman was relieved of his non-compete clause, and would then address this board about starting a contract as a management firm for weaves, and the CEO and CFO would then become employees of the management firm. If that is no longer the wish of the board, I'm fine. If we, if what you're asking is for me to start discussions with Mr. Cannington about being your permanent CEO, I'll be happy to do that, if that's what this board is asking for, but-
You have, Michael, real quick, let me interrupt you. You have to be careful, because we're still in negotiation with Sacred Heart too. So we don't know who's taking this job over.
Exactly.
And if you hire this man permanent, now you're going to owe a severance package and all this other stuff.
That was, exactly.
I kind of like leaving it like it is, till the board decides what we're going to do as far as a management company, and not have to pay a severance package to somebody that we've hired permanently. And that's the reason we went with the intern, and that's the way I saw it.
That's what the board said. That's, you were exactly right.
We're right now still paying severance package to Mr. Cooper.
Paying severance package to the past.
That's correct.
Yes, sir. If we sign him up tomorrow for full-time, then two months down the road, somebody takes over, go him a whole, almost a whole year severance package.
That's right.
That's correct.
Then plus the one we're still paying on.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay. Well, I just want to, that's fine. I ain't got no problem with that, but I just want to-
It's costing us a little more upfront, but I think we're saving a lot.
Yeah, I just want the board to know it's costing us more money. And they got somebody being nosy in that office at the hospital, right? Putting it out there.
Right.
I don't, I don't know about, I don't know about y'all, Mr. Noah, but as far as me, I'm not getting the calls I used to get. And that, for one thing, is a good thing right there. I agree with the chairman on that. I think we need to just keep it like it is. Yeah, because, you know, it's like you said, the negotiation is still ongoing. There hasn't been a decision anywhere around been made, so just-
With no action being taken, Mr. Shaw, do we need to call for public comment on this issue? There's no action by the board. I think you have to call public comment before taking action.
You're not taking any action.
Not taking any action. The board recessed five minutes. And we got, we got the executive session coming up next.